Could not find.
John, do you join the works?
I usually do, but I'm not going to today because I've got to do all the work.
No, no, that's how you join it. You join it like a big smith.
Yes.
IT guest, U E S T.
Okay, Apple has given us permission to start here. I want to welcome everybody to the Planning Commission meeting for September 28th.
Could not find.
And we'll start with the roll call, please.
Here.
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 Would you all join me, please, in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that's enough of that. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the Chair. At all times, please use the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Is there anybody who would like to speak on something not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of last meeting's minutes. We need a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes for September 14th, 2016.
Second.
Second motion.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, the minutes are approved. At this time, we'll consider item four, the parcel map public hearings. Action on all parcel maps in this.
Before you go on, can I make your comment, please?
Sure.
I'm trying to go paperless, and this Wi-Fi system doesn't want to work for me. So, I've asked for a couple of years now, and whoever's IT needs to figure it out, so...
Being able to log in, you're not getting signaled.
There's no, the choices I have, there's no ITS guest. And it's always that way. It's always awful, so.
I will also add to that. I can usually log on, but sometimes it's problematic and takes a couple of different times, though.
Mr. Chair, does the Commissioner need a copy of the agenda for today?
That was fair, but yes, I got it.
Okay, good.
Okay, we'll go on with item four.
And our staff does a good job, so I don't mean to be too harsh. That's what my wife says, so. Okay, John, thank you.
Okay, item four A. The action on all parcel maps in this section of the agenda will be heard in one public hearing unless anyone wishing to discuss any one of these items that we pull it for a separate public hearing. No staff presentation will be given on any of these items. In any case, there will be a separate vote, but today we only have one, so we're considering item A, which is tentative parcel map number PPM 16-028. And this is Delaware limited liability, a categorical exemption, and tentative parcel map. Do we have any discussion on this one, or?
This is just an allowed parcel split in the AD.
I guess then, since we have the public hearing open, would anyone like to comment for or against on this one? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14, California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, and conditionally approve tentative parcel map number PPM 16-028 and a waiver of the final map with one exception, and conditionally approve tentative parcel map number PPM 16-028 and waiver of the final map with one exception. I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Okay, that motion passed, and we'll move into the public hearing section. So, the first one we have under consideration would be item five A, and that's a zone variance number PCV 16-006, and tentative parcel map PPM 16-023 for Ron Orlop and Neil Zerlang, Land Surveyor, Inc. It's a zone, the zone variance intended of parcel map to divide one plus or minus 293-acre parcel in the AE 20 into two parcels. Parcel one equals 6.37 acres, parcel two equals plus or minus 287 acres. The site is located on the west side of Road 60, north of Avenue 420, northeast of the community of Oroce. Our contact is Dana.
Good morning. This variance is to allow a home site parcel that is larger than four acres. And this site, let's see, there are two sequa findings. The first one is a general rule exemption, and this is for the variance. And the project is consistent with this finding because the project is a variance from a section of the zoning ordinance, and there would not be any physical changes or impacts as a result of this variance project. The second sequa finding is for the tentative map, and this is a categorical exemption, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures. And the project is consistent with this because a new home would be allowed on parcel two. Entitlement is found in Section 16 for the variance, which authorizes the filing of variance applications when practical difficulties, unnecessary hardships, or results inconsistent with the general purpose of the ordinance result through strict and literal interpretation and enforcement of the provisions thereof. Entitlement for the tentative map is found in Section 15D2, Division of Land Exceptions, which allows the creation of a home site parcel in all agricultural zones if it meets the five criteria. And the zone variance will allow the tentative map to vary from item four on this list, which is the maximum size being four acres, and in order to create a 6.37 acre home site And the project is consistent with the general plan. This project was noticed according to the law. Staff has not received any comments. Site is located on the west side of Road 160 and north of Avenue 420, northeast of the community of Oroce. This is an aerial view, and this would be the home site parcel, and the rest would be in agriculture. It's a close-up view of the area where the home site is. And we're asking for this section in here. As previously mentioned, this division would create two parcels. Parcel one would be 6.37 acres, and parcel two would be approximately 287 acres. If the zone variance is approved, the proposed tentative map would comply with all zoning regulations applicable to the subject property. The zone variance, as I've mentioned already, is to allow a larger home site parcel, which is greater than four acres. And there are findings that are mandatory. The first finding is that there are special circumstances, and the special circumstances applicable to this property include size, topography, and location. This is a 293-acre parcel located in the foothills north of Oroce. The parcel in question has been in the Orlop family for close to 100 years. It was developed as the main residence on the ranch of Turkey's cattle and citrus. It's a large foothill ranch home with a pool and several outbuildings, and the proposed home site parcel encompasses the developed area. And these features of the home site, as they exist today, were situated on the property according to the topography of the foothill ranch location. If the zoning ordinance was to be strictly applied to this property, then the maximum home site parcel of four acres would exclude many of the residential improvements that the homeowners have built on their property. To disallow the creation of this home site parcel would deprive the applicants of retaining ownership of the full value of the improvements for this property. The second mandatory finding is with regard to special privilege, and this zone variance would not be a special privilege because the tentative map would include a condition of approval stating that the home site parcel could not be further divided. In addition, the zoning ordinance requires a minimum 10 acres for further division in agricultural zones. The third mandatory finding is that no unauthorized activity will be granted, and the use on this property is home site and agriculture, and it will not change as a result of this variance. And the fourth mandatory finding is that the variance is consistent with the general plan, and we saw previously that it is consistent with those areas pertaining to the project. And staff recommends that your commission, in two separate motions, approve, first, the general rule exemption for the zone variance, PCV 16008, as well as the variance, and secondly, approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA, and the tentative map, PPM 16-023. And that concludes staff's report.
Questions from the Commissioners?
What is the other little cutout at the very bottom of that site?
That is a separate home site, that little area right here.
Yes.
That is a separate home site.
So that's been split off before, or is that what?
That has been split previously, yes.
So, we're recommending a zone variance here because some of the things that would have fit into a normal parcel under the zoning are, were built outside that.
Right. Normally, only four acres, and there, the pool back here, house, movements, and still allowing them access to the private road here.
I think the well is down there at the bottom, too, is what it looks like.
There's turkey, I think this is the turkey houses, and this is excluded from the home site parcel.
Somebody can compass this area.
Those rectangular buildings, and is that, that's Turkey stuff?
No, those are just sheds. The Turkey stuff is, I think it's down there. Barn, this is the house, this is the pool, this is a tennis court that looks, it is, you know, in the hills.
Restating property. If there's no other comments up here, we'll open this up to the public hearing portion of this. Is there anybody who would like to speak for or against this project?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Neil Zerlang, Land Surveyor. I'm representing Mr. Orlop on this matter, and I do concur with staff's report and...
Neil, we have your address, but could you state it again, please?
Yes, 2908 West Main Street here in Viceville. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions, but just as a matter of obligation, we have delineated this home site parcel around the existing fence line as opposed to this residential use, and we have not included any of the agricultural area within the home site. There are, there is no turkeys on this home site, and all of the citrus farming is outside of the home site area. So we've actually made this residential parcel as small as we can comfortably make it at this point. If you have any other questions, I'll be more than happy to try and answer them.
Must be a good surveyor, man. There's a lot of sites to this shape. Challenge, huh?
Yeah, not, well, not too bad. We do it all the time.
And the applicant owns most of the property all the way around this thing, so that we don't have any issues with neighbors or anything.
Yeah, they own multiple parcels here, well, not adjacent to this, but they do own other parcels within this area. The Orlops have traditionally been in this area of the county for, I believe Dana mentioned, 100 years, and this is one of the original home sites. I believe this was Ron's parents' home, and his son will now be occupying this home site.
I'm okay with it.
Is it, well, thank you, Neil. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this particular project parcel? Seeing none, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll get a little summary of what we're trying to approve here.
We're trying to approve a variance from Section 15D2, and item number four on there, I can go back if you want, but the maximum home site parcel is four acres in agricultural zones. So this variance would allow us to vary from that finding and approve the variance and the larger home site parcel.
I'm ready to make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
The first motion. Okay, I make the first motion, is approve a general rule exemption consistent with SEQA Act and State SEQA Guidelines, Section 15061. There is no possibility this project has potential for causing significant effect on the environment, and conditionally approve zoning variance, PZV 16-006.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 I'll make a motion to approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA Act and the SEQA state guidelines, Section 15303 pertaining to new construction, conversion of small structures, and conditionally approve tentative parcel map, PPM 16-023, and a waiver of the final map.
Second that.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you. We can move on now to item B, which is the final site plan, PSR 16-005, and that's Self-Help Enterprises, Long Guevara Architects. This is a categorical exemption and final site plan on number 16-004 to allow multifamily residential development for 126 apartment units on a 6.85 acre parcel in the R3. That's the multiple-family residential zone. The site is located on the south side of Avenue 312, Regan, between Road 72 and 76 in the community of Goshen. And this, Aaron doesn't look like Dana.
Not today, sir. Chairman Elliott, Commissioners, I am Aaron Bach, Chief Planner with Tulare County Resource Management Agency. And as stated, the matter before you today is a categorical exemption and final site plan, PSR 16-005. This is a self-help project in Goshen. By way of background, the county initiated PZ 15-009, which included the rezoning of the property from A1 to R3, which was approved by the Board of, adopted by the Board of Supervisors on 10/13/2015 by Ordinance 3483. Also, what was approved was a vesting tentative subdivision map, 835, recommended by the Planning Commission on 11/315, and approved by the Board of Supervisors on 11/715. So as stated, the project is within the unincorporated community of Goshen, and is adjacent to existing self-help enterprises, projects, and the city of Visalia sphere of influence. It's located on the south side of Avenue 312, Regan Avenue, between Road 72 and 76, with the development occurring to the east, south, and west of the project site. The project is consistent with the general plan. Its land use designation is residential. As stated, it was rezoned to R3 last year, and the housing element specifically spells out the need for new housing in Tulare County, of which this project was also noted in the housing element. The entitlement is located in Government Code, Section 664981, or 8-1B. When a local agency approves or conditionally approves a vesting tentative map, which was approved, that approval shall confer a vested right to proceed with development. Also, within Tulare County, Section 8-A-2 of Ordinance Number 352 allows multiple dwellings on one site of more than four dwelling units, subject to approval of a site plan review. And that's all we're here to do today, is approve the site plan. So the vesting tentative map, 835, this was Lot 90. It was Phase 1 of the project. It's 6.85 acres, and it was allowed 100 to 140 units. This project applies with the requirements of the vesting tentative map. It's 126 multifamily units on the gross acreage of 6.85 acres. The developable area itself is 6.1 acres, so the build-out will be at a net of 20 units per acre. There's 187 parking spaces, and this will be built out over two phases incorporating two parcels, A and B. Phase 1 will develop 3.3 acres into 66 units and 104 parking spaces. Phase 1 will include 22 one-bedroom units, 22 two-bedroom units, and 22 three-bedroom units. So there's a wide variety of housing. Phase 2 will develop 2.4 acres into 60 units and 83 parking spaces. Phase 2 will include 21 bedroom units, 22 bedroom units, and 23 bedroom units. So again, quite a variety of housing. The anticipated completion for Phase 1 is May 2019, and Phase 2 is yet to be determined as to what the completion date will be. So the project itself, as you can see the site plan, one of our better site plans, there are two points of access as required by FIRE. One, the emergency access to the west and off of Street F to the east. You can see how Street F will bring cars down into the access directly off there, about midway through the site. There is a community center and playground area, and Parcel C to the south there will be the detention basin, but will also be incorporated as part of what they call the community hub in the middle there. So what are some of the project features? As far as roads, there will be private streets. They'll be drained through bio swales, which will be a kind of new feature to this county. There'll be parking stalls, eight foot by 18 feet, and 104 tuck under. Road F will be built out to a three-quarter street, and there will be curb gutter sidewalk for Regan Avenue. The buildings are 100% photovoltaic. The community building, the hub area I was talking about, will include a computer room. There'll be common laundry, maintenance, and a storage area, and water conservation measures will be incorporated into the buildings. The connection hub itself will be the park in the community building. There will be a pond, the detention basin. There will be a playground area and playground equipment. Other amenities include an assessment district, which will be tied into the CSD, who will maintain the park. There'll be a monument sign on the frontage of Street F. There'll be trash enclosures as required by solid waste. Fencing along 312 will be redwood, six-foot fencing, and all the lighting will be hooded and down shielded. And the landscaping is to require, is required to meet the Model Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance standards, the state standards you've spoken about before. So the development standards are met by this project. The height is less than 50 feet. It's two stories. The front yard setbacks are met, side yard setbacks are met. Rear yard need not exceed 20 feet for interior lots, nor 15 feet for corner lots. Those standards are met, and the 600 feet per lot is met very generally here at 1,970 feet per family. This was notice, and notice was sent to the city of Visalia. One condition was requested, that we make it mandatory, there's ride-in, ride-out. It would be impossible to do otherwise, so we had no problem adding that condition as number 18. So that was our only comment from the general public. SEQA?
That's off of Regan's?
Yeah, off of Regan. There's a median right there, and a left-turn pocket, so it'd be impossible to do anything else but ride-in, ride-out. All right, SEQA. We did get, as part of the initial, as part of the initial project, we got Cal Water and Community Service Districts will serve letters. The detention basin will handle all the storm drainage. That was one of our concerns, because the larger detention basin wasn't built yet as part of the subdivision map. But this, through looking at their water model, this detention basin sized to meet the storm demands. Caltrans did send an advisory letter, basically suggesting that this project could benefit from more transit opportunities. But we find that this project is categorically exempt from SEQA, and it meets the infill development project's exemption perfectly.
Aaron, does TCAG typically comment on this, because is there a bus stop?
We've been talking to TCAG quite a bit about putting a bus stop at Road 72. It's part of our Complete Streets Program, which was adopted by the Board for the Goshen area. Commissioner Diaz was pretty stalwart about wanting a bus stop here, and as we've said before, it's not going to go at this project location. It's going to go on 72 near the healthcare facility, right next to the existing self-help enterprises project. That's the best location that we can find.
He says self-help owns most of the properties. This, or all the properties, we'll let Tom talk about. Is it walkable? I mean, so you can walk from one project to the other to get to the bus stop?
It's very walkable at this point. You know, as far as how the edge is built... You know, as far as how the edge is built out, it's going to be a little bit difficult because of the detention basin. There is potential for access along the, there's a water tank on the backside of the water tank there. So most of the access will be along the Regan itself when the sidewalk is completed or further to the south at, I believe that's three oh eight. Yes, Road three oh eight.
And then lots of trees, I'll ask Tom those questions.
Well, the landscaping plan does show, yes, and you can definitely ask Tom, does show the, quite a few trees on the site. At the same time, you got to measure that against meeting the water conservation standards. But we believe this, this project will be able to accomplish that.
Can't really see, but I don't think we need grass, you know, but some trees are nice. Okay, I'm sorry, continue.
Anyway, so the recommendation today is to approve Sequa and conditionally approve the categorical exemption, consistent with the infill development exemption, and conditionally approve the final site plan PSR sixteen dash zero zero five. And that completes staff's report.
Okay, thank you. I think this is a public hearing, so we'll, I guess it's time to hear from Tom.
Are you opposed to this project?
No, actually, I support it. Tom Collishaw, CEO of Self Help Enterprises, reside at five nine one nine West Road Court in Visalia. We have certainly appreciated Aaron and his team and the work together on this project to really move it forward in a timely fashion and also do what we think is mutually beneficial for the community of Visalia. So it's been a real partnership. We appreciate that. I do want to, we certainly accept, and in all of the conditions as laid out, I did want to mention two things. There was a bit of a, it's actually twenty units per acre, and I think we talked to Dana about that in.
That's why, in the presentation, I did make the, that we did, that we did say it's twenty units per acre, and that will be in the resolution as well. It's just a difference between the gross and the net, and it's going to help them get funding if we say twenty and not eighteen.
Yeah, it's just part of our funding world these days, that the main funding source we'll be seeking here is the cap-and-trade funding that does require a minimum of twenty units per acre. But there actually is a little bit different product for us from what we've done in the past. We've built our multi-family developments typically at ten to twelve units per acre, but we've worked with Mogaveiro out of Sacramento, and we think we've designed a really great product, the tuck-under parking that isn't going to feel real dense, and we're not going to have a lot of stacked units because of that. So we're really excited about this, this new design that we're, that we're doing.
What's a tucked-under parking? Is that under the structure?
Yeah, it's under the structure. So each structure will actually have six units, and the corners, they're sort of L-shaped buildings, and the corners will have a stacked unit top and bottom, but then the middle will just be top units on over, over parking. And then you can shield that parking. It's, you know, there's some old stuff that looks horrible that has that kind of tuck-under parking, but this will be, it, it's all situated in a way from the street. You won't see most of the cars, because you'll see fronts and.
What is the square footage range from the one-bedroom to the three-bedroom?
The one-bedrooms, I'm going to ask in hocus pocus of our staff who's here, but I believe the one-bedrooms are about seven hundred and fifty square feet, and up to the three bedrooms, the largest one is probably about eleven hundred square feet. Nine hundred to eleven hundred on the three bedrooms. And the two bedrooms are somewhere in between that.
And one other question. It seems like you, I know, you know, I've been to the self-help one in Woodlake, and I have, I think that's a great project, and I think people love it in that neighborhood. They have a community center, and they have a computer you can log on to. Is this a trend or something that's going to be in the future where this wireless covers the entire development so that people can just log on?
Absolutely. Actually, we have a commitment to making full Internet wireless access available to all of our residents.
Yeah, it seems practical.
And we're retrofitting some of our older projects to do just that, and all the new ones will have that. And we do, there will be in that community center, as our earlier projects in Goshen has a full computer lab for after-school use, and we have an onsite person that monitors that activity, and so it really works well.
And not everyone's going to have a computer, but they'll all have a phone, so they need to, they'll need to log on to this, and it's a good way to communicate to everybody.
Absolutely, absolutely. I did want to point out one thing just for clarification's sake, but condition number twenty warrant that has to do with onsite, keeping storm water runoff onsite. I just want to clarify that that means the whole site, and, you know, that we have, because we do see the bioswells as being able in phase one to take care of all of phase one, but once you get into phase two, you actually have to do some of that off-site in that other parcel or in the broader pond, a larger pond that we'll be doing to the southwest. So I just want to make sure that that's what that means, and we'll obviously, we have to deal with the runoff.
Yes, in broad terms, all the water will be detained onsite, whether by bioswell or by pond in phase one and phase two. I think the condition could stand to mean those things, but we could add language in there for further clarification, and it might help when we get to final maps.
That'd be great, okay. And that's fine, and maybe to anticipate one of Mr. Whitlatch's, Commissioner Whitlatch's questions. Yeah, we're going to be putting trees, and there will be some green space. It is tougher these days because of some of the new rules, but we are committed to creating the canopy that you see at our existing projects where shade is an important feature. Just as a side note, we also put shade structures over all of our playground areas. That's become important, middle of the summer, you don't want kids.
How many permeable surfaces in the development? Permeable?
Permeable.
Any solar?
We, oh yeah, we're going to be doing a hundred percent solar. We expect this to be energy neutral, zero net energy for electric. We do accept, expect some gas, and it's virtually impossible to get to net zero energy. But basically, all of the funding rounds that we're competing for these days essentially make us get to zero net energy, so we're committed to that here. So photovoltaics and over all of the site, including the individual units, and the tenants will.
Good, good. The only thing is, along, along major roads, the city of Visalia is the most guilty, and you got grass, and when the water comes on, it just runs in the gutter, and so greens should be trees and minimum shrubbery, so.
Absolutely agree with that. That's, that will be our approach.
And are you, you follow TCAG, right? Because that's, you guys have a huge investment. There's going to be a lot of people living there, so, and usually people, poorer people, the buses are very important, so.
Yes, and, and we are absolutely committed to improving public transportation options, and we're working with the transportation folks on that right now, because our expectation is that we will have a transit available, a stop available, and it'll be walkable. We'll also be encouraging use of electric vehicles. One of the things we're looking at on our current programs, and we will on this, is to have possibly even some onsite electric vehicles that would be available for people for day use, so that if you have, you could maybe cut down on two-car families, and the person who goes to work, and then the person who would still have the ability to run to the grocery store in an electric vehicle that they could just use because it's there and it's a community vehicle. So we're actually doing those kinds of things now.
We've got the housing, and we've got the healthcare answered. Now we need to work on that transit. And I think that's the, that's the formula right there.
Yes, and it's the way, it's the way forward on these, these projects. We're committed to that, and the recreational space with doing the park nearby, so it is trying to get all those things. Brian, it's too bad that the school is on the west side of the freeway, but we can't do anything about that at this point.
Also, the flight pattern, you know, that school is in the wrong place, but.
Well, and just for the Commission's edification, we have sought funding for transit in that area, and we were unsuccessful in the last round, but we have been working with the city of Visalia and TCAG as far as actually locating transit at, along seventy-two, so that, that will happen eventually.
Why? Was it just late in your requests, or?
No, it's just process-wise, you don't get everything you asked for. That, that's why we didn't last time, but the, working with TCAG, we exclusively, extensively worked with TCAG and the city of Visalia Transit to, for locating, and Reed graciously helped us out on the engineering side to make the warrant studies for a potential stoplight at seventy-two to allow transit to make the turns required. So we've gone a long ways to try to make that happen.
Don't forget you, I'm the alternate, but I can speak at every meeting, so pump me up.
Question, Mr. Chair, may I ask? Tom, do you own the, the R three property to the south of this, this project as well? The, yeah, see, that's, yeah, the south.
We own everything that's in that dark green.
Okay.
Approximately thirty-eight acres.
So obviously, you're going to move forward at some date and develop all the rest of that. Is it going to be lower density or similar?
Yes. Commissioner Diaz.
There it is. I see it.
You can see, those are all single-family lots, and we hope to build that out in our single-family self-help program. The remainder piece is, we see the northeast portion ultimately as a commercial piece, and we're actually talking to some, we would love to get some fresh food options into, into the community of Goshen. It's currently considered a food desert, so we're working on that. We don't have any commitments yet from anybody, but that's a stakeholder piece. Then the remainder to the southeast, we are currently projecting that for additional multi-family rental housing development, perhaps seniors. It's really in the future, and there are some issues that are going to be, have to be dealt with with the city of Visalia, because that hatched line actually represents the city's sphere of influence currently.
Yeah, there's, I can't jog my mind. Was there a buffer zone or something?
Well, it's not, it's not a buffer. It's really the city didn't necessarily feel comfortable, to put it politely, comfortable at the time, of having that commercial next to their industrial areas. So it was just a matter of, this project was just a little too soon after their general plan for them really to give their full consent to moving forward within their sphere of influence. So there, there's some things going on with the Goshen community plan with the city, and when those get hashed out, hopefully this, this can move forward as originally intended.
This has to mature.
Right.
With all, with that information, then maybe I need another bus stop.
Maybe the city of Visalia would be willing to put one in across the street.
Because that's a big piece of good ground. That's a, that, that whole thing's eighty acres there. That's a long walk across, that's a half a mile walk from one side to the other.
Yeah, we, we had big goals and dreams for Road seventy-six. Road seventy-six, we're hoping to make a first haul route for trucks, and because of the city's interest right now, that, that becomes a little bit more difficult. But if it did become a truck route, that would make it, that's why we chose seventy-two, because it would be difficult to get the trucks and the bus on the same street, and then Reed could tell me if that's allowed or even intelligent design and engineering standards, but we could definitely push that forward as this, the rest of this project moves forward.
Okay, thank you. What is the bioswell? What is that?
It's a glorified drainage ditch on the side of the road, except it includes plants, so you actually can remove some of the pollutants. And then it feeds into a sump generally, so it does drain and re, refill the aquifers, kind of the intent. But yeah, it's just a drainage ditch on the side of the road.
It's going to be a more attractive way than just digging a hole and fencing around it. So we're trying to combine a more traditional look of a drainage pond with some more attractive features that create contours and also help with the runoff.
And it's, it's kind of new to us, so it's a matter of education for the CSD as far as their maintenance and our maintenance into the future.
Like, it does add more maintenance to the issue, huh?
Right, but if it's, it's done the right way, and the maintenance is established, they, they do really well. Great amenities, and they're, they're required in areas of California as we sit today, so.
My subdivision quail run, that's what we did, because there was no options. Drainage swale all the way around, and then a park in the middle, and it's all for ponding, and it's lovely, it's cool, there's trees, and it's a, it's a nice way to dispose the water, recharge, and keep your subdivision cool, so.
Okay, I guess we can, is there anyone else? Then thank you, Tom. Anyone else like to comment on this project? Seeing none, then I guess we can close the public hearing part of this and ask for a motion, unless there's any other discussion up here.
I'd like to make a motion. Being, I think Orocy, if you guys check the history, was the original self-help, the very first one, it was built in nineteen fifties, and I've seen the old footage of it. So being Representative Orocy, I'd like to approve the, this, make a motion that we, that we approve the self-help PSR sixteen zero zero five final site plan, number PSR sixteen zero zero five, and approve the category exemption and general rule exemption from the California Environment Sequel Act and the State Sequel Guideline for Implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act of nineteen seventy, as pursuant to section one five three three two, class thirty-two, pertaining to the infill development as section one five zero six one B three, as there is no possibility of significant impact, and conditionally approve the final site plan, number PSR sixteen dash zero zero five.
Second day motion.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 You've been a good partner.
So we'll look forward to some more self-help stuff. Now it's time to move on to item C. I suppose we have some Commissioners that need to.
Are we going to hear it today? Are you going to hear it?
If we could, of those who are going to recuse themselves, if they can recuse.
I'd like to recuse.
As far as I understand, Commissioner Millies, Whitlatch, and Commissioner Gong, you have to recuse yourselves from this. In that event, we only have three people, so we don't have a quorum, so we won't be able to have the public hearing today, because there are not enough members left to take action or to hear public testimony. So we'll have to continue the hearing until October twelfth, which is the next meeting.
We don't need to leave for that, right?
No, sir. Yeah, because you're not taking an action to continue, it's just.
We don't need to hear anything on this project, though, I guess.
No, just notify everybody in the room, it's being moved to October twelfth. We don't have a quorum. We don't have four out of the seven people to hear it, so they couldn't make a decision, so therefore, we've decided not to hold the hearing today, but we'll hold it on October twelfth.
You just discovered that?
We just discovered that. Well, not enough time to notify everybody.
So you need five?
Four.
We need four. Four, four out of seven.
Who are the recused Commissioners?
Nancy Particularlyano would be the only remaining person after they recused themselves. Three people recused themselves. Yeah, recused themselves.
I was thinking there was four still.
No.
Yeah, we had, our chairperson had missed today, and normally we'd have a quorum, so.
We would have liked to accommodate you, but under our rules, we cannot.
I get it, I just didn't realize three were recused.
Yeah, that's our.
We need someone to recuse themselves.
Okay, so we don't need to even vote on that, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, well, let's, we dealt with item C, so we'll move on.
Vote to continue it?
Can't, we don't have a quorum to vote.
We don't have a quorum to vote.
Yeah, we can't vote on a motion with only three.
Question for the commissioner, for staff, or? I would suggest, they really, the board, when, if three members recuse themselves, there's only three, they can't even hear public comment on this.
If he, if he waited till we're done with our meeting today, we can talk to you outside.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be the best way to do it. Um, okay, we'll go on to Item Six, which is the Director's Report.
Thank you, um, yesterday, the, um, the Board, uh, well, announced, uh, subsequent from the previous meeting, that, um, Ben Reese is now the Director, they, they appointed him Director of RMA, so we've been able to remove the interim, uh, tag, and so we're, we're looking forward to great things as we move forward with that. The, um, safety element update is moving along, we've been working with Cal Fire, uh, reviewing some of the components of that, we're tentatively scheduled to have that before your commission on October twenty-sixth, uh, I believe it's the twenty-sixth, it's the second meeting of October, uh, so we'll have that for you then. I know there was a comment about some, uh, bridges and noticing from Cal Trans that we received, and, and Reed will, um, address that, and, and actually unfortunately, we thought this meeting was gonna be longer, we, we're, we're planning to prepare a, uh, a presentation, a full presentation about, uh, bridges and, and that, and Reed would go into that, but we thought that the meeting would last a lot longer today because of, uh, of the circumstances, it, it wasn't, but, uh, at a future meeting we'll have that. Uh, I think that's all I have for today, and Reed can talk about the bridges and noticing from Cal Trans.
I, I think we're probably aware that we've got a pretty aggressive, uh, bridge program as a result of highway bridge program funding, which is federal money to replace the, what they call off-system bridges, these are the smaller bridges that have been for roughly fifty years, kind of forgotten and ignored, and, um, we've got about twelve of them programmed that we're working on replacements, reconstructions, rehabilitations, and we've made pretty good progress there, and just last week, we got some very good news, is that we got authorization from Cal Trans that we programmed another nineteen bridges. Um, so that's pretty much clearing off our backlog of bridges that are identified as either functionally obsolete, meaning they're too narrow, the guardrails aren't, uh, current standard, that sort of thing, or structurally deficient, where they don't meet current seismic codes and standards. So, we're very excited about that, we've got a, pretty much through twenty-twenty-five, our work, uh, cut out for us on the, the bridge side of the, uh, public works development. Um, one of those projects that we are currently working on is the Mineral King Bridge, or the Oak Grove Bridge as it's known, this is the bridge over the, uh, Coia River on the road up to Mineral King there at the park. Um, that's probably throughout the county, one of our most identifiable bridges, it's a historic, um, concrete arch bridge, it's a pretty interesting structure there, um, but that is both functionally obsolete and structurally deficient.
Is that the Mineral King Road Bridge?
Yes, yeah, where you're going up, and it's the sharp left, and you go across the river, and then you continue to go on up there. Um, and it's recognized as a historically significant bridge, because it is kind of a unique, um, design and construction method and structure. So, the, because the bridge is structurally deficient and functionally obsolete, um, we're looking at either a replacement or reconstruction of that bridge, and there's currently kind of three options on how we're gonna proceed with that. Um, the first option is a full replacement at the alignment, and it would be done to somewhat, um, mimic or, uh, replace visually the, the, the appearance of the existing bridge there. The second option is to repair the existing bridge, which would be go in, chip away a lot of the concrete, and replace and add new steel reinforcement rebar, that sort of thing, um, but keeping the, the integrity of the existing bridge there as much as possible. And then the third option would be a new bridge at a slightly different alignment, and maintain the old bridge in place, as sort of a, I guess, a pedestrian bridge only. Um, if you're familiar with the bridge down off of, um, the Kern River, uh, on Mountain Ninety-Nine, south of Johnsondale, that's kind of what they've done there, where there's the new road bridge, and then the old bridge is, uh, pedestrian access only. So, we've had some meetings, um, some public outreach with the, the residents of the community up there, and it sounds like from their perspective, kind of the repair, um, rather than replace option is more preferred, um, but it does have to go through, um, the State Historical Preservation Office, SHIPO, and they, um, are, are ultimately the ones who make the final say on which direction of those three options the bridge will, will go through. So, we're waiting to hear back from them on that, and ultimately, construction will, um, we're scheduled for spring of twenty-twenty to really start the work out there. So, normally our projects don't take quite this long, but because this is kind of a unique, special circumstance with the, an important bridge, um, there's a few more hurdles we have to go through. Um, we did hold recently a public hearing, um, which was ultimately as a result of Cal Trans being out there and seeing that the bridge was structurally deficient, um, we have to post that bridge for either a load restriction or a speed restriction, um, and the load restriction option would have precluded any of the forest, uh, there are the Park Service fire vehicles to cross the bridge, so we decided to go with the speed rediction, uh, restriction option, and that just, for crossing the bridge, it's a five mile an hour speed restriction, so as you go across the bridge, if you're going slow enough, you don't get kind of the, the oscillation movements that impact the, the structure, so all, all vehicles are allowed to get across there now.
It says ten on the sign out there, though.
Is it ten, it may be ten, it is posted now, and that, that process has been completed, so I may have been mistaken there.
Are bridges supposed to do that, every time I go across the bridge on DeMarree, across the one ninety-eight, you feel it going like that?
They are developed so that, um, and there's a couple different design methods, but yeah, that oscillation is, uh, treated and accounted for in the design, and that's ultimately... It, it's unnerving, absolutely, um, and, and that, that oscillation is when you get some of the highest loading impacts, so slowing down the vehicles crossing the bridge reduces that, that impact there.
Is that a single-lane bridge right now, or, or can two cars pass?
Um, I believe it's, it's kind of wide enough for two cars to pass, but it's pretty narrow, and there's some tight turns, and people are going...
They better be little cars.
Yeah, quite slow, so, um, it, it's one of the locations where I think most people kind of pull off, and they'll look up the canyon and enjoy the view, maybe take a picture of the bridge.
How do you avoid silting?
What?
Avoid silting, you know, when they're doing the construction, I gotta believe, no matter what they do.
So, the, the silting, sedimentation, the, we call it scour, where sometimes the silt builds up, and sometimes it is reduced. Um, with our new bridges going in, we do a, a hydraulic analysis to see what the, the water flows are gonna go through there, and, um, if it's a condition where you're going to have a lot of scour, or, uh, soil's being removed from the location, we'll do, um, uh, rock slope protection, put in the, the riprap, the boulders, or concrete the channel, um, but we have to take into consideration the environmental aspect, too, if it's a, if creek or stream bed, be a little bit more careful.
But Mineral King was, gotta be a nightmare for that, so...
It's, it's a challenging location, it's a pretty steep, um, valley that we're, we're coming through there, it's fairly tall, it's probably thirty to fifty feet, something like that, so even to, um, uh, replace the bridge, if we were gonna do it at the same alignment, we'd have to allow for some sort of a detour and put in a temporary crossing, something like that, so it's a challenging location.
Well, the biggest loads that have gone over there lately, too, are they're redoing a lot of what used to be Silver City now with the new owner up there, and, and they had some problems with insulation, and there's been a couple big trucks that have gone through there, of people that really do not know that road or how to drive it, so it's been a challenge to get them to slow down, and, um, that work should be over by the spring, so hopefully, um, they'll pay attention to the signs, and...
We're particularly concerned about the, the firefighting equipment up there, we wanna make sure that they would have access.
And they are planning a, a fire, too, as soon as it rains, so hopefully it will.
So, it's, it's an interesting project, and we're, uh, following it closely, we plan to have a couple more, uh, public information meetings or hearings, uh, with the community up there, as we kind of get to the points in which we've able to provide a little bit more information on where the project is, is going.
I really appreciate it, Reed, this is great, thank you.
And I, I do, if, uh, you know, at the discretion of the commission here, I, I would like to have our, our bridge team come in and kind of give a little bit more of a detailed information, some of the projects that we have completed, and the, these next nineteen or so bridges that, uh, we will be looking at in the upcoming years.
I also got a letter from, oh, go ahead.
I just said that'd be great.
I also got a, I get the newsletter from Cal Trans, 'cause I'm a TCAG member, boy, there is a lot of Cal Trans work going on in our, in addition to these bridges, I mean, a lot, you know, they finally, it looks like, settled on al- alternative three or four for the Betty Drive, and, I mean, it's just ninety-nine's getting like a major overhaul.
Uh, I, I think that, that's, that's a good point, uh, we'll have Velma send out a copy of that, uh, uh, Cal Trans newsletter to, to all the commissioners.
That's a great idea. About time we get some of that work.
I wonder if Caldwell and Ninety-Nine is getting closer to the plans for the shopping center, 'cause they're gonna, they're gonna do all of that, Caldwell Ninety-Nine, uh, cart mill, even water cart mill than they've done already. Do you think that's gonna be a big economic builder for Tloro County, Mike?
All that's built out definitely will be a driver on a regional basis, yeah.
Caldwell Ninety-Nine, the, the Caldwell two-eighty portion of the, the roadway portion of the project, we're moving forward with that, and we're hoping that, um, within the next, uh, year, we'll have some, um, the, the right-of-way has pretty much been acquired, we've got all the one property acquired there, um, we'll be doing a clearing and grubing phase and some utility relocation in the next year, going directly to construction on that, and the interchange, I understand from Cal Trans, they just completed what they call the preliminary study report, which is kind of step one of the, the design to actually replace that, that interchange, so that was a big step that they finished in the last month.
Great.
Uh, there's, there's a letter that we sent to, um, uh, the Forest about the Forest Plan that, that I'll have Hector, uh, talk about, but, but first, I just got a confirmation of a, of a meeting, upcoming meeting in Three Rivers, uh, there's a hotel proposal for Three Rivers, and we've, we've confirmed that we're gonna have an outreach meeting at the November seventh, uh, the Town Hall meeting, so we'll have, um, representatives from the developers, as well as county staff, attend that, but basically that project is, is, the zoning where it's proposed is, is allowed by right, but because of the sensitivity of the proximity of the river, where the staff has recommended, uh, having an environmental impact report, so we're working on that, uh, we'll be releasing the NOP and this, and having a scoping meeting i- in the near future, uh, for that as well. It's kind of a unique, uh, project in that, uh, they're gonna be using, uh, state-of-the-art, uh, wastewater treatment onsite for that, so that'll be interesting to look at that, and then there's also a tiny house component of this project, not only is it a hotel, but there's gonna be about fifteen separate, uh, cabins that are built and designed similar to the, the, the tiny house fad, so it's gonna be a unique thing, there's also gonna be a component of a, of a walkway, riverwalk type of thing along through their property, so there's a lot of neat, uh, uh, aspects of, of this, and they're also, uh, looking to the community as far as the aesthetics, to make sure that, that the facade fits with the, uh, community character, as well as, uh, some of the internal things they're talking about, using local artists and displaying their works on the walls and things like that, so, so it's gonna be a unique, uh, community type of, uh, thing, so, we'll see. Yeah, well, yeah, well, for, for, to mitigate for some of the things, the, the laundry will, obviously, will be, as they do with the hotel across the way, will have to be done, uh, down the valley floor, and then bring up to, to ways to mitigate the use of water and, uh, lessening the wastewater, but also they're gonna have a, a gray water component of that for landscaping and other stuff, so there's, it's an interesting...
Is this where the golf course is, is that where they...
No, it's, it's immediately across, it's just south of, you know where the post office is?
Yeah.
It's immediately south of the post office on the riverside of one ninety-eight.
It's a good site until the hundred-year flood comes. But, uh, it's, you know, it's an interesting project, and I think there's a lot of good things about it, and there'll be some people that'll certainly naysay it in Three Rivers, but the, uh, the, you know, putting the workers onsite and giving them some quarters, too, that really makes a lot of sense, and a lot of tourist areas are going through crisis because they have no housing for workers, and that's a very progressive element of this, and it'll be interesting to see what else we can do on this project.
Dollar general.
We need the rooms, we had a record number of visitors this year, over two million to the park, and we had lots of nights, usually weekends were sold out in the summer, but we were sold out a lot of weeknights, and so we need, uh, accommodation, so that, that'll be in its favor, there'll be...
Absolutely, there's a, there's a synergy with the additional rooms, uh, you're gonna have local businesses be able to have more opportunity, the local restaurants, local gift shops, the artists that have little, uh, galleries, all of that will, the component will just be a positive for, for the economic development.
A property like that also will underscore the need for some kind of, um, transit connection with the rivers, more than what we have now, the bu- the bus, I notice, is growing in ridership that we do have, but we need something so tourists can come there, so that's something that we can put in the TCAG hat, and maybe they can come up with something to help us.
Absolutely, the, uh, transit is, is run by data, and if there's enough tourist room nights that are being booked, and there's enough, uh, uh, capacity there, there, for, for, uh, ridership and seats, be filling the seats, and it makes sense, I, I'm sure that that's something, so if you get more hotel rooms there, there might, there, there definitely could be potential for, um, better use of, of those types of transit options.
Although Europeans are telling us they want that, and so a lot of them go to, you know, Fresno and Yosemite, because they don't have it on our side, we're missing a lot of economic opportunity there.
Like, how many rooms is this proposed?
No, I can't remember, I think it's around a hundred and ten or something.
Yeah, it's a hundred and twenty or so with the tiny houses, the tiny houses are novel in that a lot of people, um, you know, these will be more extended stay people that come for several weeks, because of the VRBO and the Airbnb thing we're going through, we have no long-term housing to rent in Three Rivers, it's gone, and so this would be an alternative for people that need to come and do special projects in the park or whatever, and I think this, you're looking at something that's gonna be a big part of the future of Three Rivers, is more of this kind of development. Anything else, Hector?
Yes, my turn to speak, Hector Garrett, Chief Environmental Planner, uh, I wanted to just give you a recap, a summary of, of the letter that Mike mentioned, uh, that the Board of Supervisors sent to the Sequoia National Forest regarding the update plan. What it really encompasses are three forests, the Sequoia, Ennio, and Sierra National Forest, and this effort has been going on for about four years now, and they finally drafted the plan, they finally released it, and the, the environmental impact statement that goes with it, the, the Fed equivalent of an EIR, so they asked RMA staff to review it, to comment to it, so we did, we provided, uh, a comment, and we provided a letter at the direction of the Board commenting to that plan. Uh, the plan itself, uh, is updated like every fifteen years, and the existing plan right now really hasn't accomplished what it set out to do, uh, what this plan is doing, it has four alternative approaches, basically A through D, I won't talk about A and C, 'cause they're really not too much, some, A is always the continue as is, you know, and then, and then C is not very aggressive, but B, alternative B is favored by the Sequoia National Forest on how to, how to move forward on managing the lands out there, and alternative D is basically the same thing as B, but, uh, twice as quick, twice as aggressive, twice as the area, so for sake of conversation, if they wanted to, to, uh, implement the plan and cover a hundred thousand acres, alternative D would do two hundred thousand acres in the same timeframe, so looking at that and looking at the analysis that they put together for the environmental impact statement, we're, we looked at the resource impacts that are going to occur, but more importantly is we looked at what we call the baseline, this plan was drafted, uh, completed this year, started four years ago, but what has happened to the force in that time, year, timeframe, you know, basically the baseline has changed, you know, there have been more catastrophic fires, we have had tree mortality, we have had bark beetle infestation, we had had prolonged drought, all of that is not accounted for in the plan, as such, the Board says you need to revisit that and establish a more current baseline, you're not accounting for all of this stuff, and, uh, in the alternatives approach, that's why the force likes alternative B, that's their preferred approach, the Board, uh, likes alternative D, so our letter basically said, why aren't you going with alternative D, that is, the thing about alternative D is, like, if you look at all of the resource impacts it's gonna have, it's either equivalent to or less in every resource, that B is the favorite approach. favorite approach by the forest has. So you're like, why aren't you going with D instead of B? So that was one of the things, because obviously, the bark beetle and forest fires and drought knows no boundaries. It goes where it goes, the way the forest, I guess, the density of the forest has to behave. Now, you have to understand, too, that the forest is, has been, they've had, and I'll say, successful fire suppression for the last 80 years. So what does that mean? The natural fire interval return has not occurred. So tree stands that normally used to be about 20 trees per acre is up to 300 trees per acre. So what does that do to the fuel loading? What does that do to the water consumption of all of the vegetation that's out there? So there's a lot of stuff that needs to be incorporated into this plan that alternative B just hasn't, will not actually be able to accomplish that alternative D can. When you look at the resources such as air quality, greenhouse gases, water supply, water quality, all of these things that come together, and even the things that we enjoy here is like recreational opportunities, timber harvesting, all of this stuff has just been stymied when the monument came into place. And I'm not trying to criticize anybody's policies, I'm just telling you, that was taken away. We have one big mill here left in Tulare County, you know, at Terabella, and it's, you just can't sustain the timber or the lumber industry with all these restrictions. One of the things that they did not do is include the monument as part of the forest plan update, even though the national forest has authority and manages the national monument there. It's part of the Sequoia National Forest, just a special component of it. They didn't account for that. Why is that important? Most of the water, as it trickles into the Tulio River area watershed, comes from that area, and that's not being managed. So you have all these what I call straws in the ground trees and vegetation sucking up all of this potential water that could eventually go into, and refill our watershed here. That wasn't addressed. They said, that plan's not going to change, it's not even on the table. Okay. So they just, we felt that was a flaw, too. Some of their analysis was interesting. They talked about the Inyo, and they said it has these recreational opportunities and these economic benefit type of things, but they never mentioned Sierra or Sequoia. Then they talked about Sierra timber harvesting opportunities, but they never mentioned Inyo and Sequoia. And you're going, that's a fatal flaw, that's non-disclosure. So when you do any environmental document, you get killed by two things, process, non-disclosure. You violate the process, forget it. You don't disclose something, forget it. You just lost your argument. So those were what I call me for fatal flaws that they didn't address. So the board then basically sent a strong letter indicating that they support alternative D, that they should go back, reinitiate the process, and that they should have a current baseline. So yesterday, the board took action to affirm that. And so that letter went forward, and there may be an article in the newspaper today, I haven't read it, but we did have a Times Delta inquiry regarding that notice. So if you want to read the letter, it's included in the board packet. In addition to the letter itself, we attached comments from the Farm Bureau, and we also have about, I believe it's about 11 pages of background information from within that environmental impact statement that is basically quotes from them saying, why D is better? And yet they're pursuing B. You know, so we cited to certain pages, certain sections, and certain impacts, and we just wanted to emphasize through our board that, you know, we prefer alternative B. The forest is huge. It represents about 36% of Tulare County, so it is not small. It's not just in our backyard, it's more than our backyard, it's huge. So with that, that was pretty much what they did in the letter that they affirmed yesterday to be sent to the Sequoia National.
How do we get a copy of that letter? That'd be interesting to see.
Yeah, we can get you a copy, but like, sir, if you did go online, immediately, go online, go to the Board of Supervisors, scroll down to the bottom left, you'll see Board Agendas, and then click on that, and then the current date will come up, and you can click on that, and there's a whole, it's all there already electronically.
Is that the one from yesterday?
Yesterday. And just go there, and it has everything that you need. I mean, if you want.
If Wi-Fi worked, I could get it right here.
Yeah.
But it's all there, matter of record, of course, so if you want to access that, it's much quicker than me getting you a copy right now. But I, when we get back, I can give Velma the link and then.
Yeah, Velma could just send me the link, because I.
When we send out the letter, the Caltrans update letter, we'll include in that email, we'll include the link to.
This sounds like it's a very, it's, there's another thing we're not talking about here. We're hearing in Sequoia, because I have access to a lot of the Washington DC people, that more of that's going to be set aside in a monument by the end of this year.
There was a settlement, there was a part, that's including part of the Sequoia Forest Plan, that I believe 20 or 40,000 more acres are going to be added, but that was included as part of the forest. That was kind of reserved. They knew that was going to happen.
Right.
You're absolutely correct.
Well, I think that we're going to have to prepare for that. This is a challenge. I've been all over that area looking, and the tree mortality is, it's changing now, and it's still happening. It's going to continue for a couple of years now, and even what we do now, it's just like you're saying about they didn't look at those conditions changing, in two years, we're going to be looking back and say, boy, we didn't think of that.
Got to account for that.
It's still dynamic.
The lack of water and, the trees are going to continue to die, at least for the next couple of years. And I believe there's about 60 million trees identified that are dying, and about 18 or 15 or something like that million are in Tulare County itself.
Right. The thing is, though, now they're saying to fire scientists that once they die and everything drops off them, they're less of a fire risk. So we got to get to that period without a major fire. I don't know how we're going to do it.
Not. You know, when I worked at the Valley Air District, I also worked in the prescribed firewall that they had there, so I speak their language, and they know that. And I know a lot of the forest resource management folk up there, and they get frustrated, too, because they have certain rules that they have to follow, as we can't go to the monument and touch anything. They can't even build a road during an emergency to go, send fire crews out there to put up a, or do a fire break. So they get frustrated, too. It scares them to death that they have to go fight these things, and they legally cannot do this, and that doesn't make any sense. I mean, it's, sometimes we need common sense to prevail, and that common sense is, I go there and I mess up five acres combined of a forest to make a road, or I'm going to lose 50,000 acres of a forest. But yeah, they're, and again, that's why, we don't know why they select alternative B as their favorite, but alternative D is more robust, twice as fast, twice the size.
Well, the giant sequoias are putting a whole new aspect into this because they're, this is what they are, I mean, we set these public lands up to protect these resources, and now all the forest around them is all being affected, and so are the giant sequoias.
Well, it's a unnatural environment. You know, way back in the day, you know, when settlement would first occur here, again, you look at the density of the tree stands, you know, 10, 15, 20 trees per acre, now 300? You know, so what, that just, that just makes such a, what they call ladder fuels. You know, the trees are taller than they should be, so as the fire climbs up, it gets higher, and then the branches from the bigger trees catch fire, and then it becomes a crown fire, they explode, and it's horrible. And then other shrubs and bushes out there, like a manzanita bush, are normally about four to eight foot radius, 20, 30 feet big. These things are trees now, and they're real oily, so they're real combustible. And when they go, they go really fast.
They're also dying like crazy, too.
Yeah, so that makes more tinder dry, you have more fuel for the fire, literally. So that's about the summary of that.
Interesting stuff.
So basically, what you're saying, if that monument catches on fire, that there's no, they can't fight it.
Well, they have limitations on how they can.
Yeah, they'll lift the restrictions for that, but they will fight that fire because they, the number one priority is when it gets around those giant sequoias. And that's what the monument's set up to do.
But we're about to lose them on our watch.
Yeah, that's true. They're really threatening, you know.
They'll have to get special permission, probably from the highest level.
They'll get it, and they'll get so much money.
That'll take them two weeks, and in the meantime, the place burns down.
Yeah, they want, they need to, those, that's the bottom line, they need to do bulldozers or lines so they could, you know, make whatever.
Sure, they have to do some backfire and all that stuff that they do.
Well, the big surf fire now is the 19th biggest fire in the history of California, but it's also the most expensive. So every year we go forward, it just, you know, increases in how much it costs to fight these fires, you know, and it's a terrible waste of resources.
When I worked at the air district, we got frustrated by them because they always want to burn, 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 and we're like, where there's smoke, there's smoke, there's fire, you know, and vice versa. So it's just, we don't care what you guys do, but you have to understand, the cleaner act is telling us we have to protect the human resource over here, we have to watch the criteria pollutants. So you can burn, burn all you want, moon skating, you know, but you got to remember, you're going to make smoke, and that smoke is going to travel not only into our valley, but if it gets high and hot enough, it's going to go east. And as a sidebar for your amusement, working with the fire folks, a good friend of mine, Siraj Ahuja, very talented man, very good fire boss, very good fire planner, you know, he said, well, I said, you can't by law send it to a non-attainment area. We're a non-attainment area in the valley, you can't send it over the hills, you can't send it over the mountain, because they're like, oh, we just sent it to Nevada or Arizona. Can't do that, they're non-attainment. So he says, well, he goes, sometimes, Hector, people don't even know we're making a fire. I said, what do you mean, you don't know you're making a fire? He says, well, sometimes, we make it look like it's billowing clouds. It goes, it goes, and sometimes, when we have systems coming in, which is a great time to burn because it's going to rain and the humidity is up, it's like, we put it behind the clouds. So you disguise it, or you make it think it's somebody, that it's not what it is. I go, so basically, Siraj, you're telling me to do a Siraj Mirage? Or you do a Siraj camouflage? You know, and everybody's laughing at this. You can't do that. You know, we can't send our smoke over there, you know, we can't do that. So they have their frustrations. I mean, the way budgets work, too, I knew the Sequoia folks got upset when the Tahoe Forest got some of their money. So it's not like new money's going to be infused into the system, but it's at that point now where new money has to come in for them to meet that management objective.
Well, they have money right now to light prescribed fires, but it's so dry, the vegetation, they're not allowed to.
It's, you know, when I was at the air district, they used to test burns, 300, 400, 500 acres, then they do a 5,000 acre burn, while my colleagues at South Coasty said, test burn? Or Ventura? Test burn, 300 acres? That's a project. That's a test for us. You know, they see how the fire's going to behave, and it's, they assemble a whole army. You know, they're ready to go. I mean, they literally bring in an army of equipment and aircraft, whether it's fixed wing or helicopters, you know, they're ready to go. And one time, they went without our permission, we gave them a ticket, $47,000, you know, for violating an air district rule. We settled for 35, you know, but it's like, this is a serious.
Isn't that kind of.
Thing, you know, for health.
Does that kind of bother you that one government agency is fining another government agency? Called tax dollars?
Well, what happened is it's mandated by the US EPA.
Can I just say, still, isn't that?
Getting rid of the EPA.
They all got to require, they all got to comply with.
Give them days off or something, you know.
An inconvenient truth if someone wants to.
It is. It is. It is, I mean, look what we have to do, we have to do stream bed alterations, reading those by government permission from California Wildlife to do those kind of things, or the 401 or the 404 water permits. We had to pay a small fee, what I call the Arab Akhulvert, because he was the first project he worked on here, we had to pay like, close to $10,000 in.
It was mitigation fees. It was $13,000 in mitigation for a $10,000 project.
Nice, that makes sense.
For a point, .03 acres of impact.
Not that I ever break the law, but when I have to pay $10,000, when one government agency has to pay $10,000, it's funny money.
And it was $10,000 in consulting fees, too.
Oh, okay.
That's it.
Well, thanks, Hector, that was very interesting study, especially for those of us that look at that forest every day, so. Anything else?
Our council have any update or anything?
How'd we do, council, today?
I'm sorry to be what I'm getting on the last.
Well, it's always a shame when someone comes here expecting to be able to participate.
Don't worry, we explain that to them outside.
It happens.
Brad Dunn, I think I understand, he's an ex-government retired employee.
You guys keep bringing that information to us, though, like what Hector and what Reed did today, that's incredible stuff. And the hotel project, I think, is going to be really something that'll be interesting for Three Rivers. So thank you so much for bringing that to light. If there's nothing else, now, we have the conference coming up, so don't miss that. And there are some spots still available, and we've talked to Mission Inn, we can still get you into Mission Inn, so if you can make some last-minute arrangements, please join us. We're adjourned for today, thank you.